We call the all of the regional city council meeting Tuesday, December the 13th, Incursion by Pastor Dr. Michael T. Galloway, regional police department chapter, and president of the municipal alliance of regional and vicinity. Pastor, as you pray, would you remember Mayor R. C. M. Harret Brown?
Yes.
And pray he has surgery today, and also Councilwoman Teresa Stokel, who will be traveling back on a trip that she had to travel.
Let it in your heart pray today. Father God, as we come before your presence today, we just want to say thank you. God, you said in your word in all things, we ought to give thanks. And God, we thank you tonight, as you have allowed us to assemble, oh God, in another council meeting. Father God, as we come tonight, we just pray right now, and so this is your presence in this meeting, oh God, that what is said and what is done will be not only for the best interests of Reevesville, but for your glory, God. And we pray tonight, oh God, that you will just lead God and direct us in a special way. God, we pray also for the names that have been mentioned tonight, oh God. We pray that you be with them, oh God, let them know, oh God, that you said you never leave them nor forsake them, and that you will always be with us. So God, we pray for them, and not only them, but God, we pray for this city of Reevesville. As we know, a lot has been going on in our city concerning violence. God, we do believe that you, through your people, can do what no other power can do. Now, God, be with us tonight, and we'll be so careful to give your name all the praise, honor, and all of the glory. In Jesus' precious name we do pray, and ask it all, and everybody say, "Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Way to be safe. Councilwoman Stokel, are you with us? You should have had James Carter. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. We have two items, and one we want to have on the pool for discussion. If not, I'll take a motion.
I believe we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. In the discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Consideration of a text amendment to amend Article 7, Section 12, signs requiring permits of the city zoning ordinance to allow wall signs for religious assemblies in R-20, R-12, R-S12, and R-6 zoning districts. Randy Moore submitted the petition. Team 2022 dash 07, enclosure 1, Jason Harden, planning and community development manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Council-
Flathead, just like you.
What can I say? Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. The city has been petitioned by Randy Moore to amend Article 7, Section 12 of the Regional Zoning Ordinance to allow wall signs for religious assemblies in residential districts. Concurrently, staff petition religious assembly wall signs be allowed in all residential districts, including R-80, R-20, R-12, R-S12, and R-6. Currently, churches, synagogues, temples, and other places of worship, religious assemblies are in permitted use per Article 5, Section 2, table permitted uses in all residential districts. However, per Article 7, Section 12, signs requiring permits, only church identification slash bulletin signs are permitted in these districts. This text amendment is to allow wall signs in the residential districts and to provide more signage options for religious assemblies, and as most of them are located in residential areas with more than one building located on the property, which may require some needed signage. Staff suggests the proposed amendment be approved with the same ordinance requirements currently existing in the office and institutional zoning district, that's ONI. Single-family dwellings are also found in ONI within close proximity to wall signs with these requirements, and that would ensure the state conformity with the surrounding area. The standard staff proposed for religious assembly wall signs in residential districts are one per building, wall facing the street, one square foot per linear foot, per feet of wall, 18-inch projection limit, and internal or external lighting. Staff also proposed standards for religious assembly wall signs either side or rear, so there's two different signs. So the first one would be for like the one that fronts the public street. The second one would be for like one that's on the side or the rear of the building. So slide different sizes requirement. The standard for the second sign are one per building, one-half square foot per linear foot of wall, 18-inch projection limit, and internal or external lighting. Finally, we suggest that Article 12, Note A, be applied to residential assembly wall signs, to both signs. That reads that wall signs shall not cover or interrupt major architectural features as currently applies to wall signs in ONI. The planning staff recommend the proposed amendment be approved, and the planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed amendment be approved as well.
Are there any questions, suggestions? Very none, the public hearing will open at 6:09.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone present that'd like to speak for? Assuming none, do we have any president that'd like to speak again? Assuming none, the public hearing will close at 16:00. Council.
Make a motion that we approve text amendment, Team 2022 dash 07.
We have a motion and a second. In the discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, CDVG grants. Consideration of design aspects for the CDVG dash CD penthouse project. Closure 2, Julia Harper, penthouse manager, and Josh Will, CPL architect, engineer. You're all flathead, just like him.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Hope y'all are doing well tonight. So Josh is here with us from CPL to answer any questions that you might have about the design. In your packet, you should have had pictures of the conceptual design that we're looking at for the venue. Couple of things I did want to mention is, you know, originally, this had to go before the state Historic Preservation Commission, and so this design is basically, has been approved by them. That held us up for several months waiting on that. Of course, COVID was happening and everything else. So a couple of things about this first picture in here, if you have your pictures with you, of the outside of the building. You can't see it here, but there's actually a patio that will be in front of the building. That patio will match the patio that's on the opposite side of the gazebo. The back of the gazebo has a very small knee wall in it that would come out, so that the gazebo is a walk-through, and the patios would connect. So then it becomes a much bigger open space with patio. Josh is going to go back on these drawings. We had looked at maybe doing four. These are not windows at the front, these are actually doors. So they will open up, so that it can be more of an open area. We're looking at doing four of those, if possible, so that that front side will basically open up. And these doors slide back, so that, you know, people can just come and go. And we are looking at four there. The siding, it's not siding, I'm sorry, but the sides are of a bistucco material. The colors have not been chosen for that, and we've talked about with the brick, so that it matches what we have at the penthouse, looking at doing more of a whitewash on the brick. So that's the outside. The insides, we are looking at doing a finished concrete floor, and one of the reasons we're looking at that is because it will be much easier to maintain, and will prevent us from having to bring in somebody to clean after every single event, you know, scrub floors, those kind of things. We can just spot them off, we can move it. And that's really one of the concrete floors we're getting into now. Yeah, so. So we're looking at the grays on that, and then see the back room, the lighting that we've looked at, and then the materials for the bathrooms, and then you can see what the inside would basically look like. There will be men and women's bathrooms, of course, and there will be an area that will be like a prep area for the caterers. We are not making it a huge area, because we have a commercial kitchen in the main house. They could use the commercial kitchen if they need that. But when they come in, they would be able to do prep work in there, we'll have ice machine in there, refrigeration, and a sink, so that they'll have that at their usage. And then the bathrooms are at the back of the building, and then we will have a sidewalk, and I don't know if you see that in here, you may not, that would come from the parking lot up to the entrance that the caterers would have, so they would have actually a separate entrance. And the sidewalks that exist now, the brick sidewalks, would serve as the entrance to the building. So we're here tonight for approval of the conceptual design. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you. Oh, looks really good, thank you. I have a question about what's the capacity, given the seating arrangements, to show, have you done out how many facilities would accommodate that?
Yes, sir, right at 250.
And just a little bit concerned regarding the overall design, if one of, for those windows presented, if they take the security risks, is there any consideration? It looks like it'd be mighty easy to access.
What place you said those were the doors?
They're doors.
I meant, a door, A, I meant, that's why I meant to say door, and you don't see any problems with all the doors?
No, sir, you know, we have, how many doors we have at the penthouse? I think 17 and 17 windows, so yeah. I think we'll be okay. We can certainly put it on the security system that we have, so that there's any tampering at the door, we would know.
Looks good, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Harper, after talking to you, when I looked at this design, it was kind of stark and harsh, but after talking with you and telling me that we can tweak it to make it blend in a little better with the penthouse, and we can do that with no problem. I like that.
Right.
So thank you for your information.
You're welcome.
Sounds a beautiful building.
I think so too, I'm very excited about it.
And I like the fact it uses cement doors, so no cost.
Yes.
You have any concerns about the restroom accommodating 250 people?
I won't let you address that, yeah.
So we actually sized the restroom per code, and we added extra fixtures in per Judy's and others' comments, so we have more than that's good.
Chris Phillips was extremely concerned about restrooms, so we expanded, we expanded on those twice, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, Council.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve and present the design tonight, so that the bid package can be sold in early January.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of ordinances amended to meet Senate Bill requirements as represented by the Police Department, as requested by the police, regional police department, second reading and approvals. Declosure 3, Chief Ray Gibson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, City Manager. Thank y'all for giving me a little bit of time. This should about wrap up what we need for the police department deciding Senate Bill 300. I know back on November 8th, we had a final reading for several, and the first reading for these two, and these are all for a final read and approval. And that will be Section 11 dash 22, consumption of malt beverages and unfortified wine, Section 12 dash 1, prohibition of malt beverages and unfortified wine in city parks and recreation areas.
Any questions? Does anybody have any specific questions for those two sections? If not, do we have a motion for approval?
I would like to make a motion to approve of this, of this ordinance as raised.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Excuse me. Should, sorry, Teresa would make a vote. I didn't hear her say it.
Teresa. Teresa.
Thank you.
Teresa, can you hear me well?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay. Next, consideration of amended to meet Senate Bill 300 requirements as requested by Community Development and Public Works, second reading and approval. Declosure 4, Jason Harden. Not quite as fast as you were, man.
I tried to slow down a little bit. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Again, as the chief said, this will wrap up community development and public works as well for the Senate Bill 300 amendments. We had the first reading of these sections back in November, and this will be the final reading, and we are asking for, you know, the vote of approval on these proposed amendments. The proposed amendments are Chapter 1, general provisions, Section 1.8, violations of ordinances misdemeanors, enforcement of certain ordinances by penalties, other remedies, continuing violations, we're proposing to repeal subsection A, Chapter 4, buildings, construction, and related activities, Article 2, housing code, Section 4 dash 27, dwellings not in compliance but not unfit for human habitation, Section 4 dash 32, alternative remedies, we propose to add language to those sections, Article 3, swimming pools, Section 4 dash 51, violations, add language, Article 4, non-residential building maintenance code, Section 4 dash 86, alternative remedies, Article 5, municipal service district, commercial- Article 5, municipal service district, commercial maintenance code. Section 4-100, violations and penalties. Add language. Chapter 16, streets and sidewalks. Article 4, driveways. Uh, excuse me, I skipped. Public Works. Good. Municipal Service District was the last one for Community Development. So these are for Public Works, who I'm speaking on behalf of. Chapter 10, municipal utilities and services. Article 2, water and sewers. Division 4, water system policy for cross connection, backflow, and back syphonnage. Section 10-113, regulations. Add language. Section 10-135, certain uses prohibited. Add language. Chapter 16, streets and sidewalks. Article 4, driveways. Section 16-40, permit required. Add language.
Any specific questions on the Senate Bill 300? Hundred. There being no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the Senate Bill 300 code amendments, amendments, chapter 1 and 2.
Second.
Any discussion? City manager, hearing none? Those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
So we can vote at that time? Aye. Thank you, Jason. Consideration of ordinances amended to meet Senate Bill 300 requirements as requested by the fire department. This is first reading. And chapter 8, fire department and prevention. Article 2, fire prevention code, section 8-20, adopted. Declosure five, Assistant Chief Josh Vaughn.
Thank you, mayor, council, city manager. I'm here tonight, as the other departments have done in the past, to update our ordinances to be in accordance with Senate Bill 300. Chief Bracken and I have been looking at specifically chapter 8, fire protection and prevention. Before I begin the reading, I want to note that after the books went to the press, I realized that Chief Gibson had already addressed section 8-3, congregating fires. So this ordinance does not need to be considered to knock again. So section 8-3 has already been addressed. So we do not need to consider that again tonight. First, I'll start with the sections that are outlined in the package. These sections require two readings, so no vote is needed tonight. This is the first reading, and the actual vote will occur on January 10th. Again, these changes are just adding specific charging language to each ordinance related to the Senate Bill 300. I'll start with section 8-2, riding fire rates. Section 8-30, districts within which storage of explosives and blasting agents is prohibited. Section 8-31, districts within which manufacture and storage of fireworks is prohibited. Section 8-32, storage of Class 1 combustible liquids. Section 8-33, districts within which new bulk plants for flammable or combustible liquids are prohibited. And section 8-42, burning of brush. Section 8-42, burning of brush is actually a new ordinance that is being proposed to you all because we currently do not have an ordinance that addresses the burning of brush, open, open burning of trash, brush, and other materials of rush. So we thought that this would be a good time to, to bring this before you all for approval and consideration. Lastly, a proposed amendment to section 8-20 to adopt this section, ensuring that the current edition of North Carolina Fire Protection Code and the current edition of the North Carolina Administrative Code is in effect for the city. The wording was dated in the old ordinance. It needed to be updated, so that's what we've done. And this proposal only requires one reading, can be adopted by vote tonight. Without further ado, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have related to the amendments and the new ordinance.
Yes. Thank you. There's a question about 8.42. And that, I thought that has always been a violation to, not, just means, the burn leaves, I thought we always didn't, like, prohibit it from that.
See, you know, we thought so as well, and there is an old general statute that's listed in the ordinance, but it's not very specific. It's very broad and doesn't have much teeth behind it. So we thought it would be best for us to address the issue so we would have something more specific that would be applicable in situations that we would need to address.
Thank you for your clarification.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Did it start with a class 1 combustible liquid? Is that only, okay, I said only, what is that?
So Class 1 combustible liquids are liquids that are combustible that have a flash point of around 75 degrees or less. So the fire effects are much more dangerous and much more hazardous in the community. So if something will ignite at 75 degrees, it's pretty, pretty dangerous. So we don't want anyone storing that.
Chief, could you brief us a little bit on that, on that leaf burning? Because I get a lot of calls about it.
Sure, I will. So like I said, we did not have an ordinance that specifically addressed it. So this one, he, this ordinance that's, that's being presented tonight, it says the burning of leaves, brush, trash, or any other refuse is prohibited within the city limits. So we get a lot of complaints throughout the city of people burning trash, burning leaves, burning rubbish, and really, it's just annoying because of the smoke. That's what most citizens complain about. So we go out typically, we talk to the, to the resident or the owner that's, that's conducting the activity, and most of the time they're complying. But this here will allow us to have, have an ordinance in place that if they absolutely refuse to do so, then we can take action.
And in the past, we just referenced the state fire code. The state does address, like, a thousand-foot structure.
But yes, you can solve it. I can't hear.
In the past, we've always referenced the state fire code.
That's what I thought.
And that's how we're able to do it.
Under air quality.
Right. And, and a thousand-foot room. So which is, gives us the team to enforce on a level where, level as well as the adoption of the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chief, could you give us a number again that we need to vote on?
Sure. So what we can vote on tonight will be section 8-20 adopted. That is just updating the language to the ordinance, ensuring that the current code of the North Carolina Fire Prevention and North Carolina Administrative Codes is in effect.
8-20 would be second reading tonight, so we need to vote on that. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that section 8-20 be approved.
Second. Teresa.
Yes, sir. I just need to call for a vote. Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I don't think. We call for a vote?
Yeah, call for a vote.
I just wanted to make sure that you heard me.
Okay, those in favor? That's my fault. You have the time. I got yours in the van, it's rude.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda, consideration of new Mall Street Partnership School Resource Officer and Accomplishing Budget Ordinance. And then, enclosure six, chief rankings.
Thank y'all again. I think as most of you know, for many years now, with the two elementary schools in the, in the city, Mall Street and South End have been sharing SRO, half a day one, half a day the other. So this year, more money was allotted by the, the state for the, for the grants, and Mall Street Partnership applied for the own SRO position and was granted that position or that was, was awarded that grant. And in your package, you'll see the budget amendment as well as the grant letter and the memorandum of understanding that has been signed with Mall Street Partnership. And so tonight, we're, you know, respectfully ask that you consider and approve the new SRO position so that we can move forward as quickly as possible and have a full-time SRO in, in every school in the city. Now, no big questions.
Good question. Chief, I'd like to say a big thank you to you in reference to the way the police department covered both schools. We had some very stressful situations that happened, and some fear in the community that something could happen here. As a matter of fact, we've been advised that, you know, you just have to look for it because it can happen, even if it raises it.
This is something you can't take for granted, Tom. Most of these shootings are happening in small, small towns and small cities. And I think it's important, and it's a very, very good accomplishment for, for the city to have SRO in every school.
Right. And then the fact that we did have to share, you guys made sure that the schools were covered all day.
Yes, sir.
Every day. And that, that was really nice.
Thank you.
Really nice. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or comments?
Mayor, this is Teresa.
Yes, ma'am.
My comment is I think the whole city appreciates the dedication of our police officers and our police teams, and we thank them for doing whatever they need to do to make it work.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Have a motion.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Put your right hand.
Aye.
Teresa says aye.
I believe, one thing, the budget ordinance amendment also needs to be approved. I'm not sure if that motion included that or not, that the, that be stated for the minutes.
Budget ordinance amendment number nine.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. I'm blinded. She didn't hear you say anything.
Budget ordinance amendment number nine needs to be a part of the motion.
Okay.
I, I make a motion. Okay, I make a motion for that ordinance amendment number nine, budget.
Okay. If we just amend what we said.
Well, it can be two motions, I think. If you have two, I'll get two.
All right.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Chief said it. Okay.
Thank y'all very much. We're looking forward to having all of your assistance.
Thank you. Consideration of amendment to COVID-19 vaccination policy and extension of the emergency paid sick leave program, PPSL, through June 20, 2023. Declosure seven, Ms. Leanne Daysen.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, madam manager, good evening. It's good to be before you again. I wish that we could talk about something other than COVID-19, but we're talking about COVID-19 again. The management team continues to meet on a regular basis. We are currently meeting once a month to talk about COVID-19, the impact on our community, the impact on our employees. In November, we were meeting twice a month. So when we met in November, as a management team, we came up with several revisions to our current policy, and that's what I'm bringing to y'all tonight for approval. The first is an extension of the emergency paid sick leave. I'll be extremely generous and if continue to extend that, that allows our employees who are fully vaccinated to be paid for 40 hours of absence should they test positive, if they're awaiting test results on COVID-19, if they're caring for a child that's sick and home with COVID-19. The current emergency paid sick leave is set to expire on December the 31st. This is asking to extend it through June 30 of 2023, which would be another six months. The second piece has changed the revisions on return to work for our employees, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, following the positive COVID-19. The CDC has changed their recommendations, and so we're modeling our policy to match the CDC's recommendations. Our current policy says if you test positive, that's day zero, you remain out of work for day one through five. On day six, you may return to work if you're scheduled, but anytime after day six, but you wear a mask anytime you're at work, day six through day 10. The new CDC guidelines are test positive on day zero, you still remain home days one through five. Day six, you can test and test again on day eight, and if you're negative on both day six and day eight, you may remove the mask on day eight. So it shortens the wearing of the mask by three days, and it is in line with the CDC's current guidelines. The third is we actually added the definition for fully vaccinated. It has to do with whether you're fully vaccinated and boosted or just fully vaccinated. Our requirement has always been to either have the one shot of Johnson &amp; Johnson or two doses of Moderna or Pfizer to be considered fully vaccinated and therefore eligible for emergency paid sick leave. So we just made that very clear in the policy. And the final thing is we added, there were several places where failure to comply would result in disciplinary action. We've changed the would or will result to may result in disciplinary action. So we've kind of softened the disciplinary action related to noncompliance. I think this is probably an illness that we're going to live with for the rest of our lives, and so we need to, to begin to move into that ongoing process. We're always going to have COVID in our world. So that's what I've come to ask for. Do you have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to know how many employees do we probably have on the emergency paid sick leave program?
So last week, we had one, and we had another that tested positive today, both of whom were fully vaccinated, both eligible for the full 40 hours. Neither had previously been out with COVID-19, so we didn't have to do a 12-month lookback. So two in the last two weeks, but it's slowed way down from the day where we were having 12 or 15 in a pay period.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the rise in number over the state hasn't affected us that much?
Not yet. So we looked this morning, the CDC has a county transmission map, and they're using the colors green, yellow, and red. Most of North Carolina remains green, although Surrey and Caswell County are yellow, and there's a large patch of yellow counties in the New Bern, Beaufort area. But most of us are green right now, and we've been green probably for five weeks in a row. That indicates a low transmission rate. Green is good.
And we're suffering now with not just the pandemic, but the tridents?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any questions on this, Leanne? Hearing none? We have a motion to approve the change.
I'd like to make a motion despite my belief in the changes to COVID-19 policies.
Second.
Just second. Any further discussion? City manager, those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Consideration of public records request policy, enclosure eight, manager, someone will.
Thank you, mayor, council. What we have before you tonight, currently, NCGS 132-62B authorizes public agencies to charge a special service charge for public records involving extensive use of information technology resources or extensive clerical and supervisory assistance. The statute does not define special service charge or extensive use. We've been advised by our attorneys that we should look at adopting this policy. The city's been advised that the adoption of a policy that includes a fee is very wise. While there's authority in general statute, having a council-proved policy will be more supportive if we were to need to charge these fees, and a proposed policy is attached. supportive if we were to need to charge these fees, and a proposed policy is attached. And I will briefly discuss, what we are looking at is paper copies would be 25 cents per page, and then we have been advised the city would require prepayment if the total fees are estimated to exceed $100. And then, of course, if a request will take more than four hours, the city will charge in a reasonable fee, which could be proposed at $33 per hour in excess of the initial four hours. And again, this has been a suggestion of our attorneys.
Any questions over there?
Have you ever done something you missed out? Does that pretty much put other folks to go to?
Yes, sir, it does.
Some people have adopted policies like this because there are people in some cities and states have just come in and flooded with requests just to tidy up, and this will reduce that from happening. Any other questions, Council?
If $33 per hour is in line with other states?
Yes, this is taken from a vast majority of cities of our size that look at that.
Any other questions? Have a motion to make the adjustment on the records of the request policy. Someone?
Second.
In a discussion. Those on table, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Nice to hear. Consideration of employee appreciation, enclosure nine, manager Wood.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I believe many of you and all of you have expressed over the years, the greatest asset to any organization are their employees. And in discussions, I believe it's to my understanding that the council would like to look at an appreciation gift to give the city employees. It would be a suggestion of city council, so does it desire. If council would like to give each full-time employee $100 as a holiday appreciation gift, we would need to gross the amount up to 125. This additional 25 will cover the FICA retirement on the $100 gift. Employees still may not net the $100 if they have state and federal withholding requirements that they're trying to meet. And then this would also propose to give each part-time employee $50, which would require gross up to $60. In addition, the city will have to pay FICA, 401K retirement on the payments as well. Increases the cost of the $125 check to 160. The $60 part-time check would cost $65. With 185 employees due to current openings, at $160, the total cost for full-time employees would bring the total needed to $29,600. This part-time total for 40 employees at $65 is 2,600. That brings the total cost to $32,200. The majority of this funding could, if city council so desires, could come already what we have built into our budget, which is within our city wellness program. The city health coach recently left this position, and therefore it's not been filled, and the city staff is evaluating the need for this position. So right there is 25,000, if not more, in savings. The additional amount needed, if council so desires, could be absorbed through the current budget with the openings in which we have. If council would like to move forward, there's no budget action needed, as the city manager has the budgetary authority to move these funds, but we did want to present this, because I know several of you have expressed appreciation to our employees, and we wanted to bring something through your consideration tonight.
Chief, question? Yes.
I assume this would be done prior to the question?
Yes, sir. We would be looking on December 22nd, because banks are closed and so is city on December 23rd. So this would be an additional paycheck if city council desires to afford it, it would be issued to the employees on December 22nd.
Thank you. Counsel, I feel like we value our employees. As I said, at the holiday dinner, I think we have the best of the best, not only at Rockland County, but all over. Much as we possibly can to let them know how much we appreciate it.
As I say, the church circle, the church say amen. I agree with you 100%.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate each and every one of you as well.
Thank y'all that count members for that.
December report, that's enclosure two.
Did we go to the, did we go to the, did that do the guy?
No.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Got you. We wanted, leading tonight, I'd like to have a few words with the city of Ritzville. Seeing none, we'll move on to the manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I would like to welcome our county manager, Mr. Lance Metzger, tonight. We appreciate you coming out and supporting us, so thank you for being here. Just a couple notes in my report this month, personnel. Our solidway superintendent, Mr. Gary French, retired after 25 years of dedicated service with the city of Ritzville. His retirement date was December the 1st. We will surely miss him. He truly embodied what it means to be a public servant, and we will miss him severely. We have moved forward with the hiring of a new superintendent. His name is Mr. Edward Shelton, who joined our team as the new solidway superintendent on November 28th of this year. Also, Ms. Rhonda Wheeler, our IT director, she retired with over 25 years of service with the city of Ritzville, and we are in the process of looking and possibly making an offer to a new IT director. So once we finalize that, we will, we'll be glad to make that announcement. A couple updates on projects. City staff has been working with ADTS, and we've identified alternative locations for the remaining two bus stop shelters. One bus stop shelter will be located at Public Works off Advance Street. This location will serve both Gunn Street Apartments and Ritzville Housing Authorities Apartments. The second bus stop shelter will be located at Lower JC Park, and ADTS will run a seasonal route in anticipation of our splash pad. This location will help serve the city of Ritzville once this splash pad is completed. We will also be placing bus stop shelters at the library downtown, in our all-inclusive park, and at the rec center. The shelters have been ordered, and they should arrive on December 31st, and we're so excited. Once they do get here, we'll be working with the chamber to do a ribbon cutting to welcome those to our community. Electric charging stations, we're continuing to explore that. Our economic development director, Jeff Garska, and myself actually had a meeting yesterday with some vendors that several of us met at the National League of Cities Conference in regards to electric charging stations. So we're waiting to get a price vote from those as well. The street skate project is still on schedule. City staff are finalizing the brick paving work at the corner of South Scale Street. Survey crews have marked all proposed work along the 100 West Block. This week, city staff will begin demolition of the curving in sidewalks in front of the Ritzville Chamber of Commerce, which they have, please keep up. My report was from last week when we submitted it. The design does require some utility work at the corner of Gilmer and South Scales. Their progress is in the initial stage. The splash pad and all-inclusive park projects are continuing to progress. We're still planning for a spring and summer 2023 opening for both parks. The Ritzville Police Department hosted a community meeting on Thursday, December the 1st, at Zion Baptist Church. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss some violence our city is experiencing. Mayor Warren and city council pledged $5,000 from the Ritzville asset forfeiture funding for Chief Gibson's use immediately to curb the violence. No budget amendment was needed, as this is an existing line item. Christmas photo opportunities have been placed throughout our downtown area. The displays will be up through January the 2nd. I'd like to give a personal and special thank you to Lindsay Tuttle, all of our public work staff, Josh Beck, Robin Yant, Judy Arbur, Denise Toms, Chris Phillips, Jason Harden, and Noel McKinnney, Chuck Williams, Jeff Garska, and all city employees who helped with the displays. You truly made it look like a Hallmark movie, so thank you. We also had our annual employee Christmas dinner on Thursday the 8th, December the 8th, at 6:00 p.m. We are looking at hosting a spring event of an employee appreciation, and I appreciate our HR director working with me to get a subcommittee formed for these employee events. And then we also, if you would please mark your calendars, city hall will be hosting our annual Christmas open house on Thursday, December the 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the first floor conference room. And then the final part of my report is I would like city council to look at some proposed dates for our city council retreat. We are looking at the week of February the 20th through the 24th. So if you'll please look at your schedules for this week and pick a couple, at least two days that would work best for you, and let us know, we can get that announcement made at our January meeting, unless you'd like to discuss this tonight. But please just get on your radar for the proposed city council retreat. We are looking at the week of February the 20th through the 24th. And Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Prior to council member, council members, the boys, I bet you don't let's talk.
Yes.
She's been sitting waiting patient.
Good thing I had a good night. Good afternoon, and I just want to say, normally I don't speak, but I just, in my heart, told me to let each and every one of y'all know that I have enjoyed working with each and every one of y'all this year, and let's hope for a good year next year. Thank you for all that y'all do.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Very good.
All right, the new members, we have a Terracquest Environment, Grace's Table, One Bank Bread Specialist Cookies, Kim Nelson Mortgage Protective Specialist, and City Storage. We have a ribbon cutting at Grace's Table on December the 15th at 12:00, and that's at 103 Gilmore Street, and also the Clock Tower Ribbon Cutting, January the 7th from 2:00 to 3:00. Our upcoming event is the 25th Annual Martin Luther King Breakfast, which would be Virgil, and that's January the 16th, and our annual awards, which would be February the 1st at 11:30, location is to be announced. Our January coffee and connections will be countywide with all three chambers at the Rockingham County Community College, Whitcomb Student Center, January the 10th at 8:00 a.m. And y'all have a beautiful Christmas, and you bless each and every one of you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep mine short tonight. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I wish you the best, safe, healthy, and fantastic Christmas. And if you're looking for a little something extra to put in the stocking, ADTS has bus passes, there are books of 10 and 20, they're great stocking stuffers. If you're under 72, it costs a dollar to ride the bus. If you've never ridden the bus, please take time and ride around. In one hour, you can go around the whole city, and there are people in need to get a free ticket sometimes to ride the bus. So you have it in your heart, buy the tickets, you can actually stop the SCAP bus and give the driver the money. They know which one people need the, the extra trip more than anybody else. So great stocking stuffer with not much money involved, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, one more scope.
A mayor with his permission, I'd like to discharge my report and without a charge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, one last.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And counsel, very brief, attended the November the 28th, we deal ministerial alliance meeting, and we're just very grateful. We have the president of the alliance here tonight, attending the city council meeting, and President Dr. Michael Gallagher, great president, and glad to be a part of the alliance. So it was planned for the Dr. Martin Luther King service in January coming up, and also had a hospice director, yes, speaker there, and so that was very enlightening. Also, I was able to be sworn in at the Rockingham County Sheriff's Office again for another four years, Deputy Sheriff, after Sheriff Page was re-elected sheriff. And so glad to serve for, be sworn in for another four years, and just never know if I'll be needed again for some kind of law enforcement activity, then I would be ready to be willing to do that. Really enjoy, I attended the November the 15th, the NLC in Missouri, Missouri Conference, and what a pleasure to meet the council leaders from all around the nation, and to look at the different cities and how they do things, and to get as much information as good to bring back here to our city. So it was really a privilege to attend that. And also attended the community meeting at Zion Baptist Church. Again, as already stated, Chief Gibson did an excellent job in addressing the community. And also, I want to just say, the community is just fantastic, the number, turnout, community came out, and we're very proud of that. It seemed like it's really working, council members and everybody, it's just a great thing of unity. That's my report.
Thank you. Counsel, one more, Deja Ne.
Thanks, Mayor. This has been busy month for all of us, and I just want to thank the police department and everyone in the city, fire department, all of you for a great job you've done. And being, returning here from a large city, this city has been a blessing, because it's a well-controlled, and we noticed that people are able to walk around, just feel free, and that makes a difference in all of our lives. On November the 9th, I attended the landing of Rockingham Ribbon Cutting, which is a facility I think that is welcoming for this area. I also attended the Leep and Tele Ribbon Cutting, and it's another event center that I think is upscale, and it's going to be well-used by others for weddings. November the 15th, I went to the Caswell City, met a lot of great people, and had time to spend with our own council members. It was a great experience. It was really cold, but it was a great experience. And on December the 1st, I attended the community briefing at Zion Baptist Church, which was an eye-opening for all of us. I think we learned a brief lesson from one gentleman that was there, who taught us about reporting what we see, our surroundings, and he also talked about how he can help us by his experience in his past life, and I want to thank him for that. That's Mr. Lee, I think he's a, well, strong gentleman, he can just stand up and say what was on his mind, and thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize, I've seen this county manager and a friend of Rico, but it's already done, so Lance, thank you for coming. And the other thing I'd like to add, I'm really proud of Rico Rams, I know all of you are.
Yes, sir.
We came up three points short, had an outstanding year, and I think just outstanding young players.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the coaching staff, sometimes they couldn't call them, promote these young men as future leaders, so.
Yes, sir.
That was a real pleasure to watch. He's winning.
Yes, sir.
Our basketball team is off to a good start, too.
Yeah, super good start with the scores.
When you beat somebody seven, three to seven, it could be fifty.
Fifty-two to two. I'm going to forego, I'm not a poet, I attended-
I attended all of what has been mentioned, including a few other ones. And I just want to say again, a big thank you to all of the partners that are part of this fine city. You guys have been great. As Star said, I'm praying that, we've had a good year, and I pray that 2023 will be even about the way we've had this particular year. I want to thank my council members and James. I'm just kidding, James.
Get out of here by 7:00, man.
If I pick at you, I like.
Hey, I'm getting out at 7:00. Hold on. Get out at 7:00.
Well, and I had promised too that we'd be out here by 7:00. By 3:00 pack of time, it's only one minute past. Almost there. And yes, we need to get there by 7:00. So it's going to be two minutes past.
I have 30 seconds? Okay, all right. There were two vacancies considered tonight. The first one for the planning board, there were three applicants with a vote of three votes. The majority, Joe Towns of 2003 Richardson Drive, was appointed to that position. That only leaves the ETJ position on that board. And then for the Greensville Fireman's Relief Fund, Bobby W. Powell, 642 King Street was reappointed. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would. I was getting ready to do it.
I will make that my motion.
All right. Back in a second.
Let the record be declared.
All in favor?
Aye.
I heard that.